Let me invite you to stand with him and us, and let's begin to the word of prayer. And then remain standing and join us in the pledge, please. I'm gonna call County Engineer Lynn Rawls to open the meeting with prayer.
All right, let's pray. Heavenly Father, just thank this blessed day you've given us. I thank this time we can conduct the county's business, Lord, and that be your will, Lord. Watch over those that are all that are sick, those that are suffering from this COVID, Lord. That hopefully one day will find a cure. We know that you have a will and in the way, Lord, for our adopters to find a cure for that, Lord, and just pray for that. Asking, Lord, just pray again, watch over our first responders again, Lord. Thank you to them and everything they do. And I ask, Lord, again, just feel with us in this meeting, become and conduct it the way that you see fit. That's all. This is things, hold on a minute, pray. Amen.
Amen. Will join us in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
So we have a quarrel. All of us, all the commissioners here today, so we can conduct business. We appreciate all of you joining us today and appreciate your interest in the business of the county. We have no scheduled comments from citizens, no awards and presentations, but we do have time for elected officials and other officials to make comment. Sheriff, do you have anything you want to bring at this time? Okay, all right, and then we'll come back, come back around to employees later in the meeting. Commissioners, under the consent agenda, you, you receive minutes from the September eighth regular meeting and also the September twenty second, twenty second regular meeting. And then you have seen the list for accounts payable and payroll for August and September. They're included in your packet if you haven't reviewed those yet, but are there any corrections to be made to any of these items? Or is there a motion to approve the items under consent agenda?
I'll make a motion.
All right.
Second.
Motion and second. Anybody else have concerns or corrections to make or note? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. All right, those items are approved. Thank you. We have nothing scheduled under old business, so we'll move right on to new business. Page fifty five and fifty six in your packet, commissioners, consider board appointments for South Alabama Regional Airport and also for Florilla Airport. The you see the list there, Florilla Airport Authority, the expired term is John Gardner. He has, he would serve a six-year term. And then South Alabama Regional Airport Authority, Gary Smith, whose term is about to expire, and he's, those members are appointed to four-year terms. Just make note, Gary Smith is the joint appointee between the City of Op, City of Andalusia, and the County Commission. And John Gardner, I think I'm right, is the joint appointment between us and the City of Florilla. So why don't we just handle those individually and Tony, you have thoughts on the Gardner appointment?
Yeah, I've spoken with Mr. Gardner, and he's willing to serve. Yeah, I think he's done a great job now, and also received letters from Mayor Florilla agreeing to him going back. So I'd like to make a motion to reappoint him.
Okay. You've heard the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
These are really, it's open for nominations. Are there any others that you want to consider and nominate? If not, then we'll vote on the motion to reappoint. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. We'll reappoint John Gardner in conjunction with the city for a six-year term. South Alabama Regional Airport, Gary Smith is that joint appointment. His term's about to expire, a four-year term. He's serving as chairman of the Airport Authority. Talked to Mr. Smith. He's willing to be reappointed again if we are so inclined. I'm not aware of any conflict among the other appoint, appointing agencies with Gary Smith. In fact, I can tell you without his reservation that they fully support his reappointment. What I think I would like for us to do is just make, make that appointment from here, and we'll submit it to them to take action, to concur with ours. Instead of with Florilla's where it came to us second, we'll just initiate that action, so. Unless there's something else that you guys want to do. Is there a motion to reappoint Gary or some other?
I would, I would make a motion to appoint Mr. Smith. It's our part of the airport.
Now, second. Motion and second on Gary Smith. Are there any other names to submit? If not, you've heard the motion. There's nothing else. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. All right, we'll forward this to both cities and get their concurrence. Thank you. Page fifty seven, commissioners, you should have a copy of a proposed contract with the County Board of Education. And it's between the Board of Education and the County Commission and the Covington County Sheriff's Office. There may be some questions on that. Sheriff, do you want to address anything particularly on this or?
Uh, this is the one for the, uh, the Board of Education. Uh, I don't have anything in particular to address. Some of the, the, according to the, of course, the fee has gone up to a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars to provide these, these officers.
Okay.
Uh, so I, I, that's just what it is.
Okay.
It's kind of fine.
All right, any, commissioners, y'all have questions on it or is there a motion to approve the contract as submitted?
Not so much on this contract so much, but on, well, on this one, I think in the future we might want to look at, maybe putting a clause in there to, if we have any cost of living increases and stuff like that, because it certainly adds to the cost of the department. And that had to be absorbed. I think they would, you know, they do the same for their employees. I think that'd be something the school boards would certainly go along with.
Yeah.
But as it stands, I'm good with it.
You're good with it? All right. And how would the? This is a twelve-month renewal, right? It's a year to year. Okay. Uh, and, and just for understanding, we have one officer that's assigned to the Florilla area schools. That gets, that's WS Harlan and Florilla High School, a single officer. A single officer at Pleasant Home, a single officer at Red Level Schools, which is elementary school and high school, all on the same campus. And then at Strawn, which is elementary, middle, and high school, but again, it's a single campus. Okay. Is there a motion to approve this contract as submitted or any other questions on it before we get into entertaining a motion?
I don't know, Kenny.
Also.
All right. Who made the motion? Did Joe, Joe, did you make the motion, Kenneth?
I thought Joe made it.
Okay.
No, I made it. I'm, I'm fine.
You go ahead.
We're gonna, we're gonna.
His comment said he was, he agreed with it.
Yeah, yeah, okay. I, we'll just, to get everybody on, signed on, we'll just ask, say that Kenneth made the motion, Tony seconded.
It didn't matter to me.
And if there's nothing else, we'll vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. All right. Next item is a contract with the town of Sanford regarding the signing of a deputy full-time there. And I'm assuming this is just a renewal of the same contract we had last year or are there some changes to terms?
There is some changes in the actual, uh, price that we, we charge them.
Okay.
Uh, I've got with our payroll clerk and the, the number that I got is what's, what we come up with is what's on there. Uh, I understand that, uh, it, uh, it may not be admitted, so, you know, according, miss, miss out on my teaching, so. That would be something that we could negotiate with him.
Okay.
You know, either later or how we all want to do it.
Otherwise, the general terms are the same, forty to forty-three hours per week and assign to the town, an area up to five miles beyond town limits so that he can be flexible or he or she can respond outside of town.
Right, and it's, and it's really worked out very well this past year.
Okay. Commissioners, y'all see the memorandum of understanding in front of you? Is page fifty eight, is there a question or other questions on this for the sheriff or comments that you want to make? Or we're open to entertaining a motion to approve?
The only thing that I would say is what Joe said a long ago, kind of with this one, is I'd like next year for us to take a week prior to this thing coming up and look at it again and make sure we're being fair to all parties and is to the sheriff and the Samfords as well. I mean, I know there's vehicles involved, there's fuel involved, that, you know, we, I don't think rode into the original contract.
Do you have any idea how many calls he answers in Sanford or anything during this year's time?
I, I do not have it in front of me, but I can give that information.
I think that next year that would be good for us, you know, to be able to look at that and see and how much he's able to help you outside of the, outside of that.
Well, so far he has been tremendous help, uh, as far as we, this is just the day-to-day operations of the Sheriff's Department. If we need to send them somewhere, we send them, and, uh, we've done good by the town of Sanford and they've done good by us. We try to keep the schedule pretty flexible, to be flexible for the town and everything, and, uh, so far it's, it's worked out really well.
I'm, I'm certainly not against this. I think it's an extra, I think it's an extra man on the road, but I, I just think we need to be fair to both parties a little.
I agree.
Well, I hadn't heard any negatives on it, and, you know, we've done this kind of as a trial too, and it could be touched up. So I reckon we've done pretty good if everybody's still in the grips to, to the town of Sanford and everything seems like we've pretty much hit what we need to be, so.
But with that said, Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion.
All right, to approve this contract, is there a second?
Second.
All right. Any other questions on it? Comments? There's motion and second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. All right, that's approved. Next is consider approval of contract with municipalities for inmate housing. And you have in your packet from page fifty nine to sixty-five, I guess, the setting forth the contract and it just changes, changed the name, changed the municipality, put the full contracts in here for you to review. The particular one we're looking at is town of Lockhart and, how many, what other cities are we in?
And Andalusia, Op, Florilla, Lock, Lock, Red Level, Gant, River Falls.
Okay, and they'll all look like this?
Yes, they're, they're, it's a, you basically just change the, change the name.
Change the name, okay. Do you recall if there any ch, changes in terms other than the, uh, maybe there are none. Are there any, we need to note?
There are no changes, no.
Okay, this is the same contract we're working under, current year. All right. All, uh, all of you have had a chance to review this or you have questions on it before we get into action?
Obviously, agreeable with the sheriff, I'm, I'll make a motion, we do it.
Okay, there is a motion. And a second, and since it's the same we had before, I think you would have had a chance to review it previously as far as I know, we're okay.
Same thing y'all been using for years.
Yes, okay. So we have a motion second. And it is not an increase in rates for this year. So we just generally, we charge the municipality for housing daily, per diem for housing an inmate. And then we charge them for meals, and if there are medical costs incurred, that's, that's to be covered by them. Outside of the jail, part of the per diem includes in-house medical team that we, we pay, and that's covered in the cost. But if they have to go outside for treatment, then that's, they, they incur that cost. We just need to be sure to bill it to them, though. All right, there's a motion and a second on approving the contract for municipalities, and again, this is for all of them, uh, that he named. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, those are approved. Let's get off of sheriff stuff and move to emulsified asphalt. Lynn, what do you have on that?
I don't have a packet. I would be.
Page sixty-six, commissioners.
I've, I've, I never got one. I think we just got one. We ever use the, the MC seventy is one of the things we, we used several years ago. We always put it on there, but we hardly ever use it. And one, one company no bid it, but, uh, um, the, uh, but Ergon be the, uh, a bit better for the CRS two, which are normal, um, patchwork and ship seal that we do in the county, uh, a request we, um, award that bid into Hunt Refining for the MC seventy.
Well, let's look at.
It'll be a split bid.
Let's look at the Hunt Refining, uh, if that's a, if, if their bid was three thirty, am I looking at that right?
Yeah.
So she got the one, the other one, shouldn't it? No, that's it. It's Hunt. I'm sorry, I was looking at the, the product. So split bid Hunt Refining on the MC seventy and Ergon on the CRS two.
And it's been years since we used MC seventy.
Okay.
And all that is, is a pre-treatment in case some has layout and just keeps it weatherproof
Okay.
for a little while before we get paid.
Is there a motion to award those bids to the low bidder on each item?
I'd make that motion.
All right. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, motion and second. Any other questions for Lynn on that? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. All right, that's approved. Lynn, another item I think that falls under you is a consider approval to, of the updated debris removal plan. I don't know if you or Susan want to address that. I think both of you, it affects both of you.
It, it's just a requirement by FEMA. We had some of our paperwork we have to send in. Um, there's a new grant for, we have to upload all this stuff to on FEMA. And we just got through doing it recently for the, um, for this, for the tornado damage that we had, that declared that we had. And we'll do it again for this upcoming one, when it gets, things get rolling as well. But it, I didn't realize, it's been a while since we adopted the, the last one, but we just need to be updated a little bit, and that's what you have to worry about.
Susan, one, one thing that we looked at is it, it had, it was people specific, you know, it had Susan Harris or whatever. Is it okay to put, put titles? Do you see a reason we can't just go with titles, the EMA Director or the Engineer? Okay. So it, the, the updated one addresses those sorts of things and then had some typos that are, that were correcting. There is an addendum of contact in, uh, contact information that I, I think the addendum, even though it's part of this packet, I think we can easily update it without an approval or action. If my phone changes, you just change it to the default or whatever, so. Okay. Commissioners, you don't have a copy of it, but it's, it's one that's been longstanding, updated to meet where we are today. Is there a motion?
Yeah, I'll make that motion.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and second. Anybody want to read it? Several pages. You what?
Not right now.
Yeah, okay. All right, we, we'll act on it, then all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Very much administrative act to correct that, so. Lynn, you also had, again, it's not, I don't think it's in the packet because it came out over the weekend. A need to concur with an award of a bid by Aldott. You want to talk about this?
Yes, that's our H, our H triple R, um, grant process we've applied and we've received the last two years, and we hope to keep getting those. And what this does, this affects, and it can be for striping and different things, but we have a lot of big needs for guard rail on our unshielded bridge ends and some culverts that's, that's real close to the pavement edge. And this recent one is for one on Canal ninety-three, just above Cleveland School. We have two sites there. And I've got one site off of Canal thirty-two, um, which is just down toward Libertyville County, um, that's, that's unshielded. And that total contract amount was a hundred and twenty-four, nine fifty-eight awarded to H and L Guard Rail out of Troy, Alabama. And just to tell you what the grant does, of that amount, we're paying over thirteen thousand dollars for the, for that work.
A local match.
The local match, so it's a good, good one.
So we concur with, we, we, we need to concur with Aldott's award to the low bidder. And then also we're, we're agreeing to submit the funding so that the contract can be awarded and the project's started. Again, it's thirteen thousand, a hundred and four dollars eighty-two cent is our portion.
And we voted for this. I mean, it's, it's in our budget to, to cover this expense, so.
Any, any questions for Lynn?
No, sir.
Is there a motion to concur and to commit our money?
I'll make a motion.
All right, second. All right, any other questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. All right, the, uh, that was approved. Lynn, while you have the floor, do you have anything else you want to touch on or give a report on?
We still have a bunch of roads closed right now, and I'm kind of waiting on FEMA. What's a bad thing about where we're standing right now, and we do have people that need to get in and out, we actually worked the road Friday. That was kind of safe for FEMA to look at, um, because if we do the work, or at least blade it, dress it, you know, the job is looking nearly devastated as if FEMA were to come and look at it. We've knocked down big cuts. It's hard to tell what's been missing if you're not there to see it.
Question, question for you. Has FEMA, FEMA has not sent anyone in yet? Has been the state EMA?
We, yes, we have FEMA and two other state, uh, uh, first up from the state that came down. Um, and we rode Susan and I, and we looked at those sites. He basically concur with the original. It's a process we go through, but FEMA has been here and we, he's approved. Matter of fact, we looked at just two sites, and we looked at three the day, and two actually met the threshold. So, but we still have a lot of roads closed, um, but, uh, I'm hoping FEMA will get here fairly quick so we can kind of review and get these roads looked at.
When you say a lot, you mean eight or nine? Eight or nine still closed?
Oh, about nine, it's like thirteen or fourteen. We have still quite a few. I haven't looked at the total amount.
But out of, out of a total, it was something over seventy or about seventy before, so a lot of work has been done.
Yeah, seventy, yeah, we're down, we're down, we're, there's just several little log ones that are closed.
Right.
But also, real quick on our, I don't know if that's supposed to be a question, Chris, I'm, I'm still waiting, Dr. Carr with, with South Alabama. The girl, that was our main contact, she retired, uh, like two weeks ago. And, um, he, all of his personnel's in the field, he's trying to get, get down there to this other, uh, assessment on the arc block.
Okay.
This other project, so. But as soon as I get back to back there, we, we're trying to get, it's the same process, but hopefully it'll go a bit quicker. I'll go to stop it, like an acre if they got to come and look at.
Okay. All right.
Lynn, just from my curiosity, when we get the clear, the clearance on that to go ahead, how long from the day we got clearance till we can open that road?
Well, we got it, well, after, after bid, it'll take about three weeks to do that, let that to the state, and then they got the notice received. It can take, it can take up to six weeks to get started. The contract, contract is actually his ball court to actually, um, to extend or, or start the job early if he sees, because they got so many days. We, we got a notice received, letter, they got so many days to start. Well, they can start as soon as they get the notice received. Some of them want to start, but some of them will, kind of how busy they, they push it to that last day of their, their, they, that's a likely, so. That's a few variables that answer the question. But it's about, probably about six weeks, I would say, if the contract is ready, ready to go to work on.
And, and that contract will include the turn lane also?
Yes, we're going to do the turn lanes.
Oh, it's going to be one, under one bid?
Yeah.
And reassure that the money has not moved, it's still down.
Not moved at the service.
Make sure everybody knows that that money hasn't, is still where it's supposed to be.
Okay. Thank you, Lynn. Susan, you have anything?
Um, I got, received a call this weekend from a citizen that's having problems with the Hurricane Sally and damage to their home. And, um, with that part, it's hard to explain the difference in what Lynn's talking about, which is your, like I said, the PA part of it, and then the individual assistance, which is your homes. But we did not receive, we will not receive, the FEMA assistance for, for homes, for residency. And people are still calling, and I'm trying to explain that to them, and I need your help to, if you have people in your district that needs assistance. Just like this one, she had insurance, but the insurance, she's having problems with her insurance, and I didn't get in with her on that. But just know there is no FEMA assistance coming for people with their individual homes. Now, like Lynn says, we are waiting for that process to work through, and I explain again on that. You know, Lynn did a damage assessment, then the state EMA came down and he did that with Zingan. And then the federal guy came down and we did it again for the third time on the damage assessment, and that's where we're at right now. They still have to finish the rest of the counties, and then once that's done, then maybe surely FEMA's going to say we're declared. And then that's when he starts his work with Zingan working on the projects. So it's two different things, though.
So the, so the president's declaration is not sufficient, or am I misunderstanding? Wasn't there a presidential declaration of?
For PA, for, um, those areas down here, Baldwin, Mobile, those areas have already been declared for PA.
Okay.
And I think they need individual assistance. But in Covington County, right now, all we have for the citizens is the SBA, the small, low interest, or loans.
But on.
That's all we're eligible at this point, I think.
But on our, our projects, that's, you say that's still not?
It's not declared yet, through Zingan. It's just a process because they have to get all these other counties.
He's concurring, the FEMA rep that came down last time concurs with what we.
Yes.
And he was basically the, there's an upper echelon that keeps going up, and he was here to, to, to concur with any bid. But I will say this, he said our smokehouse road damage, he said he didn't see nothing in Baldwin County that was as bad as what smokehouse got. And that's, that's saying a lot, um, so.
But we met our threshold. We're, where we need to be to get the declaration.
And, and I know you're already repairing roads because you were repairing them as, you know, as soon as you could get in there. But there's no risk on any of these repairs, assuming we're, we meet the next milestone, there's no risk of not reimbursing on those.
If he's taking pictures and documenting and then keeping track of that, then we should get that fund back. What he was saying a while ago is just, is so much more, when the FEMA comes down and actually works with him and goes to that site, like, it's just easier for them to see how devastating it is, but if he keeps track of everything, and I know he is because I've already seen it, but he'll get that money back.
Yeah, okay. Anybody else have a question or a comment on Susan's report?
Susan, do you want to mention about your solid waste exemption process?
Oh, we're taking applications at this time for the exemption. We will take applications to the last day in November. And then after that, we'll turn everything into, uh, ARO the first of December. But, um, those that are exempt or those that just have some type of SSI, social security income, that is their only income in their household, those are the ones that are eligible, plus a few more. They can't have any savings or any kind of income other than social security.
No personal.
They are eligible for exemption.
No personal retirement. It has to be SSI.
Is that, that state law?
Yes, that state law.
There's some, there's some folks that we think ought to qualify based on income because of circumstances in their household. Uh, and, but we, we don't have any flexibility unless we pursued, uh, local legislation or something, and I don't know if we could even get that. I don't know how it would interact with the existing law. Other questions? Thanks, Sue.
I just appreciate what y'all's work is, getting these grants and doing the work y'all do and keeping everything. So when people comes in, they, they able to see it and get to work, and it's always been good, so I can't thank y'all enough for what y'all do, both of you.
And we did receive, um, I've got to tell you, I see this, the Department of Homeland Security grants. Um, I opened it up to every agency in the county, and I only received two applications, one from Andalusia Police Department. And then I also did one for the EOC, and we both received those grants from the Department of Homeland Security.
Good.
So I get to add on to our EOC and have it, it's going to be, like, people are coming, wanting to come from all around just to see our EOC here, so I'm very proud of it.
Good. And I think you reported last time it worked well in the storm.
It did.
Okay, very good. Mr. Patterson, do you have anything you want to share?
Yeah, I'd just a few words, um, the notices, thirty-six thousand notices to all the property owners in Covington County. Y'all should be receiving them in the mail today when you get home. It should be coming now.
I've checked my mail.
And we had a new software program implemented, and there was a lot of information we had to learn in a short period of time. And the file they built to send to the company that prints these cards was a little delayed, but, uh, you will get a notice today. To take it tax exemptions for over sixty-five, anything in the office. We're trying to do it. If you'd like to, to mail, or if you want to call us, or if you want to email us, or if you want to pay online, we definitely encourage that. If you have to come in, we understand that too, so we're there.
Okay.
Thank y'all.
So can you, can you handle the exemptions, the over sixty-five exemptions even by mail or, you know, by mail or phone call?
Yes, sir.
Any of that, okay. That's good.
We'll trust that to be there, which we do. We, we see, we have history for previous people that have these, so we know, you know, what they filed and how they filed, so we can go back to the history a lot of times.
Okay, good.
Thank y'all.
Thank you. Commissioners, y'all have anything?
No, sir.
Karen?
Yes, sir.
If not, we will entertain a motion to adjourn. Thank Tony, we stand adjourned.